All right, we'll call the meeting into order. If you would, Madam Clerk, take your call.
Certainly. Mr. Combs?
Here.
Ms. Nelson?
Present.
Ms. Reclu? Mr. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Present.
Mr. Washington?
Here.
Mr. West?
Here.
Mr. Braun?
Present.
Seven council members present, one absent.
All right. Pastor Williamson, if you would, lead us in indication.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're grateful. And I really was able to witness the final moments of this work session. How we come together as a community. And we honor each other, we respect each other, we interchange and share ideas, express needs, and then work together to resolve them. And Lord, that's a clear picture of community, Lord, that's looking for an answer to a problem. And they work it together, resolve it together, to the greater good. And I thank you, Lord, for the folks in this community and our leadership, those that keep us safe, work together to a greater good. I want to give you thanks for that tonight. The second thing, I'm really blessed to live in the neighborhood where the new center's gonna open next week, the Legends Complex. It's not only impressive, but it was a vision. And like all visions, one or two or three saw a need, began to express that need and express it to the community. The community comes together and supports those who lead in the community, and the outcome is just beautiful. For all of those, Lord, who live in this community, I express gratitude and thanks for the many, many hundreds, if not thousands, of folks that moved this project forward over the years, gained the approval of the general public that they serve. And now, we're going to have this facility minister to our community and provide fellowship for generations to come. For this, I give you thanks. I pray for tonight's session. I thank you, Lord, so much for those that lead this city, our mayor and council persons, and all our department heads, our public safety officers, Chief Myers and Chief Kofelt and their personnel, and all the men and women who work on the streets, even this infrastructure, very heavy, hard work, they're working diligently all the way across our city to make our lives better for future generations. I am grateful for that progress. Bless this session tonight. Bless our council persons and those that have come from the community to participate. And I pray for the discussions that will be held and any decisions that are to be made that they honor you. Please continue to lead and bless our city family. Those who continue to need physical and emotional support from sickness, continue to bless all those that are part of the city family. Bless this session tonight, may it be held, and may it finish to the glory of God. We pray all this in your name. Amen.
Face the flag.
Attention, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Praise the Lord.
First off, we'll start with comments from visitors. If you would like to address the council, step up to the podium, give us your name and address, and keep the comments for five minutes or less. And seeing no one come forward, we'll move on. We have approval of our consent agenda. Council members may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to approving the agenda. Tonight's items, we have the approval of a request from Callaway Cruisers to close Ravine Street between First and Second for a car show on June 5th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. This request was given to the city clerk by the police chief, who has reviewed and approved the request. And there was just a little bit of concern about the tents in the cemetery, and I think that's been resolved.
Motion approved. The consent agenda is written.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion on these?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In our agenda, it states that the request was to close Ravine Street between First and Second. But I was present last year at the car show. They also had cars along First Street between Ravine and Round C, and that's where the people were walking and gathering and sitting.
Okay.
Is that also part of the request to close First Street?
Apparently, no, according to Chief Myers.
No, sir. It's our intention to leave First Street open for people coming north on Ravine. They could go either way there, either over to Mocane Road or to Highway 54. And we eliminated First Street because of the issues we had last year.
Pretty narrow.
They can't come. If we're closing Ravine between First and Second, then they can't come north from Second Street.
They have to go around by Mocane Road or go around 54 and come in First Street.
Okay. I just know there was a lot of pedestrian traffic, and there were car show cars parked along that north or that south side of.
Last year, there were.
Substation. And that, so that's not intended this year?
Not so this year. We'd like to.
I might introduce Carney Garrett. He's the president of the car club.
Thank you, council. Last year was different than this year, and we'd like to improve what we did last year and just close Ravine Street from First to Second and allow traffic from Mocane Road pass through First Street and the south end of Ravine.
Okay. So you're not planning any activities on the south side of the substation? It's all gonna be down on Ravine?
Very sure.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that clarification.
What's the date of this event? I don't see it. Oh, June 5th. I see it. I'm sorry.
June 5th.
Sorry, I missed that.
And our event is from 4:00 until 8:00. We'll also have people coming probably at 3:30. If we could move that to 3:00, it would be much appreciated by our host.
Yeah, it shouldn't be an issue.
Our host for that day is the Fulton substation. And if I may add, the Callaway Cruisers has a mission statement, and that mission statement is to enhance the receipts of our hosts for that day and days forward, and to provide enjoyable venues for the vehicle owners. Callaway Cruisers is a firm in 2000.
What's the expected parking? My apologies, Mr. Mayor. What's the expected parking for the citizens? Since I know last year, a lot of that parking was in substation parking lot and.
Probably somewhere between 35 and 55 cars. On April 3rd, we had 55 cars at Berry Queen. They were our hosts. On May the 1st, we had 38 cars at Sonic and let the north side open for the customers.
I believe you should ask, what is your anticipated attendance from outside of the people that will have cars at the show? Do you have an anticipated number of attendees? Is that, am I saying that correct?
Is that your question?
Yeah. Where will they park? Someone driving across town to come to the substation to see the car show, where's your expected parking for them?
They can park south of First Street. They can park on the West Lakes parking lot or down by Bob's Parkway and walk up to Ravine and park.
Is there on-street parking on the little hill that goes up to the Hockaday Hill?
There's none. That's no parking either.
That's First Street as well.
Yeah, I guess.
Are you talking about Ravine?
No, First. It kind of cuts at an angle off the 54.
Oh, yeah, I think there is on the north side. That's kind of open.
Yeah.
Also, the splash pad parking area, it's pretty close to Ravine. That's in the good area that you might want to consider for people to park.
You can park at the dental office as well. They're next to West Lakes.
It won't be easy. They'll have to walk a little ways, for sure. And there is on-street parking of Ravine, just a little bit north of there, but that's gonna be a challenge for them. If they want to see them hot ride, they'll walk a little bit, huh?
What time does West Lakes close? Does anybody know?
Saturday night.
Eight?
Seven or eight.
Seven on seven. Do you have approval from those businesses for people to park?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
If we're changing the times, do I, do we need to redo anything?
I don't think that we're gonna have any trouble. Kyle's guys dropped the barricades early on, so Kyle, do you see any issues? No, I think we're fine.
Thank you.
No, I'm all up with all of them.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. All right. I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda, which includes the car show. Any other discussion? All those in favor say yes. Opposed, no. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, we'll get a quick update on the Recplex. Been busy lately, Clay?
Yeah. Yeah. The internet is in. It's operational, so that's a good thing. We hope to have phone service by Thursday. Working through the security issues over the next couple of days. Got some doors that having some issues, but the company's coming in tomorrow, so hopefully we're gonna work on that. Should have the air conditioning and heating operational after tomorrow. They're coming in to do some final setup and some training on that, and we hope to be open by next Monday. We're gonna have kind of a different hours till June 1st. We're gonna be open 12 noon to 8 o'clock at night, seven days a week until June 1st, and then June 1st, we'll go back to our normal published operating hours. So we're getting very close.
Clay, is the elevator's working?
The elevator is not. Once we get the phone service in, we'll have to connect a wire inside the elevator shaft, and then someone will have to come and inspect it.
Thank you, sir.
So even if it's working, it can't be used until the inspection?
That's correct.
And the security you were worried about the last time was because of the internet?
Yeah, and it's, now that the internet's hooked up, they've been able to do some programming for the security. And now, what we're finding is we got a few doors that maybe the wires weren't correct or there's some hardware issues, so we're kind of working through that. But it's two or three doors, not very many.
Clay, I heard a little hesitation in your voice about the 17th. Do you have any hesitation?
Well, considering there's some things out there, yeah, that aren't final, yeah, there's some hesitation, but I'm pretty confident we're gonna be ready, so.
Do we have a lot of people that have already signed up for memberships?
We haven't started taking memberships yet. We got a couple events planned for late May. I think we're gonna push hard the last two weeks of May, do kind of a membership drive, get people in there, let them see the facility, and then we'll start memberships and daily fees on June 1st.
So memberships will be for sale for that last two weeks of May?
They'll be ongoing, but yeah, we're gonna push pretty hard for the last two weeks of May.
Well, I was over there this morning for a while. I will tell you, Charlene was much more optimistic than you is. She was, she's gone home to get the building open and get people coming through the doors.
Clay might just be wore out.
No, it's been a team effort. I mean, like the pastor said, it's, there's been lots and lots of people through the city that have worked pretty hard for the last four or five months. So it's, we didn't get it open when we wanted to, but I think we're gonna be happy when we do.
Cool. Appreciate that, and we'll get another update next time, see how things went.
All right.
Okay, we'll move on. There is no new business. Council concerns, I'll start to my left. Councilman West?
Yes. I've had one citizen complain, and I've been noticing as I've been walking around in my area, that grass is growing again, so I think it's time we remind homeowners and property owners that they need to keep their grass cut and their yard cleaned up. So I talked to Dennis a little bit before the meeting. He said they've already been sending out notices, but better to get it taken care of than to get the notices in the mail. I can speak from experience there, too.
We can blast social media, for sure. It wouldn't hurt a dime.
Yeah. I know this week isn't a good week to be out there cutting grass, but I guess you did.
I just got almost done with mine. All right, thank you. Councilman Simmons?
No item.
Councilman Stone?
No item.
So, Mr. Mayor? Councilman Braun?
Yes, I just, just the one that we spoke about, we talked about last meeting about having a get-together about reserves, and I was just wondering whether we're any closer to coming up with a date and a time to have that special meeting.
Not exactly. Kind of trying to think now, what have we left out off on that? I know we're still kind of in.
We found an exploration. Darryl has determined the process for applying for the 0% loan from the state. They have not started taking the applications, but he drafted a letter and submitted it to the appropriate individual. The Department of Natural Resources is actually in charge of the distribution of that. So Darryl went ahead and got a letter sent in to him indicating that we will be applying for 3.4 million. So as I kind of understood it, we were kind of looking at that as being a placekeeper. Took the urgency off the discussion of the application of the reserves.
Yeah, but part of the issue, and I speak for myself, other council members can speak for themselves as well, but we did cut $400,000 out of street work and road work in lieu of this happening or not having a way to get around it. So I really think it's a discussion that needs to happen sooner than later.
And I concur. I think it's a complicated situation. A lot of the answers are not good answers.
No.
But we need to sit down as a group to talk about it. What options do we have?
Yeah, we're probably to the point where it would be constructive to spend a couple hours, really. So we'll try to set something up.
Thank you.
Yep. And I'll send emails out on that. We'll try to set up something that works for everybody. Okay. All right, moving on. Councilman Combs?
Nothing tonight.
And Councilman Washington?
Just some concerns in the ward floor and some of the areas down Jefferson, Walnut, Carver area, there is a lot of trash that landowners or homeowners are not paying attention. It seems to be scattering on the streets and things of that sort, so I'm not sure who, I'm not sure who did we contact? They look like renters. Did we contact the owners to say, you need to address this with your renters or something like that? And also, the golf, Tanglewood, it was brought to my attention, but I think it's been taken care of. The golf cart path, the path that the golf carts are on, some of the areas, potholes they were concerned about, some of those potholes and things that need some attention, but I think it's been addressed. A person has said that it looks like it's been addressed, it's gonna be addressed, or it's been addressed, so that matter is probably taken care of.
And I'll just say, discussions have been made. Nothing's really been done yet.
Okay.
As far as I know, but yeah, there's some pretty good potholes. We don't have the money to put a new path in, so we're gonna have to figure out a way to patch some of them, but that's in discussion, especially since we got new carts now, so we want to kind of take care of them.
It was brought to my attention, too, so.
Do we have the new carts?
Yeah. What's going on with that?
We were supposed to get new carts May 1st. Couple days before, I was in contact with the distributor. They're blaming it all on COVID. I've talked to representatives from Yamaha. They're blaming it on COVID. They think it'll probably be mid to late June before we get the carts. They are gonna bring in somebody to replace some of the seats that are torn, repair any vehicles, any carts that we have issues with, and probably get us through June. We've looked at some other options. We've looked at a different brand, but they're talking October before they can get us something. So not sure what we're gonna do. We're still kind of looking around, but right now, it looks like we won't have new carts till the end of June.
And in years past, I'd say they're feeding you some baloney, but right now, it's hard to get anything, so I do believe they're probably telling you the truth.
And I think we're not the only golf course. I think they have several golf courses that are not getting carts right now.
All right. Thank you, Clay. Moving on, Councilwoman Nelson, I'm sorry. I'll get better.
Yes. No, the only thing that I was concerned about was the level of the grass, you know, with the amount of rain that we have, and I mean, even not just personal property, business-owned property as well.
Yes, it's getting pretty tall in places around town.
At what point do we give out notices?
Seven inches?
Eight.
Eight inches? So it's gotta be about there.
And then they have 10 days after that.
And then it's like 10 days before we're gonna get around them all in it.
Who measures?
It could be another, it could be another week depending on when Jeremy and I have time to get to it. Two men.
Yeah.
And it's complaint-driven, more than, y'all don't go around with, drive around town with a tape measure, right?
If she notices a address, I mean, she'll, someday she'll come back with a she-cold letter.
Gotcha.
So we have multiple letters going out, probably.
And I will just add, state law is what mandates that 10-day period of time that we have to get someone to take care of that issue. So our code was brought in line with that, probably within the last two years, I think.
You have to tell Rocky that it's good day and it's a law.
Very good. So we're, we'll continue to work on that. Moving on, well, we do not have resolutions tonight, ordinances. We'll start with Councilman Braun, if you would, present bill number 1612.
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to do 1612 for the first and the second reading this evening, please.
Sounds good.
Bill number 1612, an ordinance amending Chapter 94 Solid Waste Fulton City Code by repealing certain sections pertaining to recycling and yard waste and enacting a new section in lieu thereof and establishing an effective date. I make a motion for bill 1612 to move to second reading at tonight's meeting. Second?
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this? Anybody got questions?
I just want to point out, for those of you that were here last year when we talked about this, this is almost identically the same ordinance. So you're gonna notice that we have basically clarifications on what you can put your yard waste in. We also set an effective date of July 1st. This would give us enough time to get the information out to the citizens via social media, hopefully maybe some utility bills, to let them know that if you want to participate in the recycling program, you do have to have a recycling container and utilize it. And it also takes that fee from $1 per recycling container to $2.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
And the effective time for that fee is also July 1st?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just for the newspaper, we will not pick up recycling on the ground. It has to be in a container.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, we've confirmed that everybody that has requested a recycling van has received at least one?
Yes, yes. And we still have a few left, so if you want another one, just let me know.
I may need one. Thank you.
I know where there might be a couple, if we need a couple extras.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So the way I read this, it's $17 per month to have the cart, and in order to get the cart picked up every other week, it's $2 per month.
No.
Isn't that right?
So, no, so 17 is, right. 17 is for your trash, and then recycling, which is a separate fee, is $2 per month, and that schedule's established by the city council.
Okay, so.
And there's no upfront fee? It's just two, two, two?
Okay, I was looking at, I was reading this thinking it was 17 for the cart and then two for the, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And I do think that we also need to make sure people know that they can get more than one.
And I do believe, I think Darren's gonna do some social media pushes as well and put something in our newsletter, so yeah, we'll be sure that that's added as well.
So if you have more than one cart, it's still only $2 tipping fee, right? Is per cart? Oh, yeah, it says that, doesn't it? Okay. Wow. Per month, per cart. I got it.
I do try.
I was looking for a bonus there.
I do try.
I thought Jeff was getting a discount there.
All right. I do have a motion in a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes. Opposed, no. And if you would, again, Councilman Braun.
Bill number 1612, an ordinance amending Chapter 94 Solid Waste Fulton City Code by repealing certain sections pertaining to recycling and yard waste and enacting a new section in lieu thereof and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to move bill 1612 to third reading at the next scheduled meeting.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes. Opposed, no. All right, we'll hear that again next time. If you would, Councilman West, present bill number 1613.
Sure. Thank you. Bill number 1613, ordinance number blank, an ordinance of the city of Fulton, Callaway County, Missouri, to approve the withdrawal of the city of Creole Springs, is that the correct pronunciation?
I think that sounds wonderful.
Okay. Williamson County, Illinois, and the village of Tams, Alexander County, Illinois, as members of the Interstate Municipal Gas Agency, and to authorize execution of a supplement to the agency agreement establishing the Interstate Municipal Gas Agency. I move for approval of this council or this bill for, at first reading tonight, I'll get this out, second reading at next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion, or you want to?
This ordinance, IMG, who we buy our natural gas from, we got, to me, it's kind of a screwy bylaw, but in the bylaws, it says for any town to leave, every other member city must agree to them leaving. I think, I just think that's a screwy bylaw. It's not.
Yeah, what if we said, no, we don't want to let them out?
Well, see, I don't know. That's what.
Yeah. Mr. Johnson, if I may, isn't there, aren't there costs associated with the number of members in the agency that have to cover the overhead and things like that?
There are costs, but this won't affect the rate we pay. We pay, I think we pay four cents a decap term. It's gonna stay four cents a decap term. Darryl, I think the four cents is too cheap of the services we get from them versus what we get from the other companies, but it will not affect that four cents.
Okay. I just assumed at some point it may affect that cost, so we're just acknowledging.
It'll affect their power as a broker.
It'll affect their revenue stream a little bit, but these two communities are very small, and at four cents a decap term, and we do 700,000, some of these might do 30,000 or less than that, so it's not going to affect their revenue stream very seriously. So it's not going to affect their revenue stream very seriously.
All right, is that clear as mud, everybody? Any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? All right, we'll hear that again next time. Moving on, Councilman Stone, if you would, present bill number sixteen eleven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I will be presenting for second and third reading tonight. Bill number sixteen eleven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to execute a contract with the assessor and commission of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the preparation of assessment lists and establishing effective date. I move for third, I make motion to move bill number sixteen eleven for third reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? This is, do we do this annually?
We do, every four years, and the price has not increased.
Any questions, discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? If you would, again.
Bill number sixteen eleven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to execute a contract with the assessor and commission of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the preparation of assessment lists and establishing effective date. I make motion to move bill number sixteen eleven for final approval at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You've heard the bill read three times, at this time, Madam Clerk, if you would, take roll call for final vote.
Okay, Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative and one absent.
All right, thank you. Announcements, our next meeting will be held here Tuesday, May twenty-fifth, at six thirty. That's the only announcement I have. We do not have a need for executive session, anyone else have an announcement?
I do.
No, I was going to.
Mike, Mike.
Okay. I passed out flyers for blood drive this Friday, May fourteenth, from two to six P.M. at St. Peter's Church, and I'll hand it out, anybody that wants a flyer. And thank you for the newspaper for putting in that as well, and what's happening.
Excellent, excellent. And Mr. Simmons?
No, I just.
Oh, you were.
Wanted to enter my data.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Are we having ribbon cutting or anything for the legend?
For Legends Reclex?
Yes.
We will have it, just going to be down the road a little bit.
Down the road, okay.
Yep, so.
I just wanted to make sure I'm there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll do something big. All right. So, yeah, we don't have a need for exec tonight, so I'll.
Motion to adjourn, second.
A motion in a second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.